Good evening, everybody. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council. It's Monday, April the 11th, 2022. I'd like to call this meeting to order. invocation this evening will be given by Pastor Curry Picart of Hope Form Church. Good evening, Pastor Curry.
Good evening. Let's pray. Dear wonderful Lord and Father, we give you thanks. Thanks that we can be here tonight. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. We thank you as well for the freedom to embrace you and the freedom to reject you and that you love us in either case. Your word reminds us that we are to obey and pray for governing authorities since you have established these authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council tonight. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our time, which can so often be divisive, a sense of the welfare and true needs of people, a keen thirst for seeking first your kingdom and your righteousness, confidence and clarity for what is good and fitting and true, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and for personal peace in their lives and grant them joy in their tasks. I pray for the agenda that's set before them this night. Please give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of South Haven. It is in the most blessed name of Jesus Christ I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you again for coming and getting us started. Next, if you're able to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, roll call. Megan.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
Steve Schleck.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Latisha Wilkins.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here.
That will take us to the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
A second.
Got a motion, got a second. Any questions, comments, or changes? Seeing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Agenda is approved. That takes us to the consent agenda items A through J. Need a motion.
To make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through J.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Comments, discussion, any of those? Nope. This will be a roll call vote, please.
Arnold.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Schleck.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. New business, city council will be asked to consider the approval of a commercial park use license agreement at a fee of $150 per agreement at our city parks. Let's do a motion first, we'll see if there's interested in talking about it, we'll go from there.
I'll make a motion to approve the commercial park use license agreement for the fee of $150 per agreement at our city parks.
I'll second.
All right, motion second. Who's gonna take it? Kate?
I'll start and then I'll maybe check team with Bill here. So this came out of, we have a number of commercial entities that have been using the parks, and we've been calling them special events, but they're really not special events, which are a one-time event where people come in and it's either free to the public or others, but where there's a third-party vendor where they take money either on the site or elsewhere and then use the site repeatedly over the summer. So I asked Bill Hunter to go to the Parks Commission and look at the commercial park use as a commercial use agreement, which is basically a license agreement. You have a license to use the property in a way deemed by the license agreement. There's certain responsibilities on both parties, and then it also sets a generalized area where they would be, generalized times of operation. Now, sometimes things happen where there's a special event, and we can adjust those on a as-needed basis. So the Parks Commission looked at this in '21, and I think July and October, and then as well as in February. So here is just a template of what we're looking to do out there for commercial uses. That's a low fee, it's the same one that we have established for special events. So some of the commercial uses that we see right now, say their weddings on the beach, yoga, for the most part, they're distributed pretty well, but we also tell those folks that, you know, should someone want to come and join your wedding who wasn't in your party, I guess you just found a new friend. But, so they're not exclusive uses, but they're uses that are happening on the beach or in the parks.
Okay. And again, these were, these have been occurring. We have other vendors that we lease space to that currently pay us, for instance kayak rentals.
That's correct. So we have two beach concessions, the South Beach and the North Beach. The North Beach has an existing building, and part of their agreement with us is that they are to clean and maintain those bathrooms as well as clean up around the eating area that's outside and adjacent to that area. At the South Beach, they are again, we have a vendor there who has already, once, supplied their own buildings and then also pays us a fee to use it. I should have said the North Beach also pays us a fee to use that facility as well as maintain those bathrooms for us. On the South Beach, like I said, they have provided their own buildings, they maintain the bathrooms and also, again, clean up the area as they're using it, similar with the kayaks, and we have kayak vending on South Beach and North Beach as well as Black River Park. Again, with the same idea that you're cleaning up the area that you're in, and there's a mutual benefit to, for the license agreement there.
Okay. I don't know whether Bill wants to share, I know those are, part of their fees are based on percent, there's some percentage in there versus this was a very simple and relatively low flat fee for having weddings or whatnot. So I mean, I just, I don't know if you just want to share, I can share too, but...
Yes, the original agreement presented for the Parks Commission in July had a 20% of the revenue intake, which is similar to what we have with our existing agreements. The Parks Commission wasn't, they thought it was a little, it was hard to quantify that, so we again presented the Parks Commission again with a revised one with a set dollar amount. Eventually, the Parks Commission, through feedback of staff, because there was questions related to, what do we charge for special events? It was $150. Plus, in addition to all of our agreements, existing agreements that we have, we charge $150. Say somebody wants an agreement, an easement agreement, it's $150. Somebody wants a special use agreement, it's $150. Somebody outside an agreement, what we've had in front of city council by utilizing right-of-ways, it's $150. That covers usually the attorneys from reviews, staff processing it, so it's very minimal, and that's what the Parks Commission thought that was reasonable to present to city council.
Perfect. And this is 150 per total, so this is, they could have 20 weddings, but it's 150 for the total season.
For the season, correct. And with that, they'd have to show their proof of insurance and listed the city as an additional insurer.
So shall we do public comments now, and then we'll circle back to this group?
Yeah, I just have a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
And that's fine, too. Just wondering where the conflict would be if we had the commercial license agreement with the person that's having the wedding on the beach, and they find that new friend that didn't come by, we still can't close that to the public, but yet they paid for $150 commercial use agreement. So wouldn't that cause more conflict, and has that been vetted by the city attorney?
I've had the attorney look this agreement over, and he doesn't see any conflict with that. And again, we always stress that this is an open air, open park. It's not exclusive to you. What you are using is that ability to be there on that date and time for that event, because otherwise it really wouldn't, otherwise be allowed. So he did not have any concerns to that.
Thank you.
Okay. How about, let's do some public comments, then we'll circle back to this group, that sounds good. So public comments, if you'd like to make any comments on this proposed agreement, come on up, state your name, address, you have up to five minutes to address the council.
Hello, I'm Leslie Carpenter on behalf of Bend Yoga. And so I just want to clear up...
Give your address.
Address.
My address?
Yeah.
25560 64th Street, Bangor, Michigan.
Okay, thank you.
I also have a business in town, Cabana Cuts. So when I applied for the special permit, paid the $150. Last year when I applied, it had went through to the agenda, and this year I was sent this agreement. Now, I didn't sign it because I didn't really know exactly what was going on, but, so it's kind of on hold then, I would take it, until I signed that agreement, but they had already cashed my $150 check. So would you need another $150 then for the licensure, or that is...
Right, that would be the same, yeah.
It's the same, so it's just the 150 one-time fee?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not certain what you paid before, but that would be something staff could help you out with.
The agreement is set up for one year, so it's $150 for one year.
Okay.
And there was a bit of a mix-up on which was coming to council today. It was the commercial agreement used to be approved by this board, and yours, I guess, jumped the line, and we were talking about your agreement before this was approved by this board. So that's on hold. Should this not go through, we'll be refunding you your $150.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Hey, thanks for your questions. All right, anybody else?
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. I provided a marked-up copy of the draft agreement that I had identified errors, and they still continue. I provided comments as early as February. Things that continue are dangling sentence, vagueness, lack of due process for alleged violations, revocation of the license agreement, and overreaching authority with regard to the trash pickup. I appreciate your statements tonight with regard to trash pickup of the other areas you mentioned, but it sounds like those are specific areas that they have leased for quite a while, that they probably have ongoing businesses there daily or weekly, especially in the summer months. They have a defined area, they have, you know, it's significantly different, it's not the same. And so I really am of the opinion that requiring them to clean the complete area is not authorized for the limited use that they get, especially if they do not have a reserved space. Anyone can come through and litter, and someone could come through immediately after they clean up and leave. And with what I've seen in the agreement, and that's why I say there's a lack of due process, is that it appears way too easy for someone to say that the trash was not picked up and revoke the agreement, and I just do not feel that that, it's fair and equitable, it's more of an adhesion contract from the city for this particular situation. I appreciate from comments on Facebook that some people are concerned about the size, and I think that that opens up questions that have not been fully vetted then. If this is supposed to only be for certain sizes, it may not be ripe for the council vote at this time. And also, that it's not sure that people really want agreements for public beaches. They are for our area, and giving them the license, even though it's not a guarantee of space, has an inference that they have some chance to have it there. I'm just, I really believe that it isn't fully vetted and that there hasn't been sufficient discussion, even at the Parks Commission, despite them approving it, they said that there was still work needed. And there's been no work since that meeting, except to correct a typographical error, but other issues remain. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Just real quick, because she brought up the point about just clarifying the issue of trash pickup under 5A. Property maintenance licensee shall be responsible for properly disposing of its own trash during the, in its blank, so we just need to insert the word "event" in accordance with city ordinances, and I wouldn't be against, it could stop right there, and then it goes on as they, after each use licensee shall also ensure that license area is free of all trash. I mean, it's kind of inferred by the first comment, which is you're responsible for your own trash? I'm just, I don't know if you went through that?
We did look at that, and again, I should reiterate, the city attorney had no major issues with the substance of this. He also disagreed that this is some kind of adhesion contract, as alleged. I should be clear that our beaches are cleaned six days a week, so if there's a substantial amount of trash out there, it's being cleaned up daily. What we're asking is like we ask any other person on the beach, especially people who are paying to, or having paying customers attend an event on their, on the beach, to tend the area and to clean up the trash, if there's trash out there.
Right, exactly. And I mean, for me, it's pretty inherent, so anyway, we still need something after the blank, the event, or something in there.
I should say, this is like a model template, there's many different, so we have the weddings, we have the yoga, so we will attend those to the individual operations as they come forward.
Right, okay. Were there any other public questions or comments on this one? All right, seeing none. Counsel, questions, comments?
Quick question, so in the agenda packet, there's an Exhibit A, and the Exhibit A is just a small portion of the North Beach, and I'm assuming that each individual commercial user would have their own individual Exhibit A that would be their specific area they're looking to utilize. Is that correct?
Yeah, they're gonna be in the same generalized area, so each agreement would be somewhat set differently. I know that the barefoot wedding folks like to be in a certain area on the North Beach. My understanding is that then yoga would move around into different areas, but we also want to make sure that our use of the beach and our operation or maintenance of it does not conflict with their proposed use. So if we're having beach cleanings at 6 o'clock in the morning, and so does the yoga, we want to make sure those uses are not incompatible.
The, so, so when they put in an Exhibit A, it doesn't necessarily mean they reserve a particular spot for a specific date, it's just saying, this is the general area we're gonna go at, and obviously it's first come, first served basis, so, and it could be any day during the agreement timeframe that they're basically wanting to utilize that space, I guess.
That's correct, I was trying to give a generalized location.
I did have one question. Now, you said that this is just kind of a template, so the wording could change slightly depending on the...
Slightly, yes.
Under 5D, it talks about quality of service, and it makes me a little bit nervous because quality is kind of a nebulous term, and to a certain extent, somebody else's quality might not meet the standards of somebody else, and so I'm just wondering, what was the, kind of the intent of that paragraph there, and is it something that's important?
I don't think it's that important, really. I mean, that could actually be something, I would have to get back with the city attorney and see what the intent of that is, but every time I look at it, it's like, well, it could be, like you said, nebulous, and one person's quality is different from another person's quality, so it could be some, I believe could be easily removed, but I'd like to get the city attorney's opinion on that.
Okay. And we wouldn't need to change the motion or anything to just make that, you know, we've given you that feedback and you can do with it as you want. Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, good questions. Anybody else? Yeah, Joe?
So maybe I'm just in the dark and I don't understand this, but I'm a little confused. A couple comes out of St. Basil Church, they want to go down to the beach, they have a party, their bride party and all them, there's 15, 20 people, they stand on the beach, get a couple photographs taken, and they leave. Do they pay the 150?
No.
They don't. Now, the same group goes down there, but they have a person in charge of this whole wedding procession. They come down with 200 people, set up tables on the beach, have a band on the beach, and now, can they do that?
No. I mean...
No, we've been limiting this to receptions.
Pardon me?
To, I'm sorry, we've been limiting this to wedding ceremonies, receptions have not been allowed on the beach. So we've been looking at smaller-scale events. I think when I look at the things that have been done out there, the barefoot weddings come out, they have a band, they've got like a small, they've got the chairs, they come out there and they set up those chairs, and then they have a walkway that they put out, and that's what we've been looking at. We have not had the receptions. We have had people call and want to do a family reunion at a park, and that's a special event application. We then get to know how many people they're intending to do, what kind of facilities they need, that kind of thing, so they've been treated differently.
That's gonna, I guess, be a good example.
So if I were paying $150, I would think I'm entitled to having a little bit bigger party than six or seven people. So I'm just trying to get clarity, and I'm not looking for an argument on this. It's one thing for my wife and I to sit on a deck and watch people get married, a party of six or seven people, even 20 people, and we enjoy it. It's a whole nother thing to close off part of the beach, I'm thinking of the steps on the south side, because the beach isn't that wide. Now, they went down there and had a party or had an event, they could literally stop people from walking up and down the beach because they've got a part partitioned off for their event, and they're paying for it, and I could see people saying, wait, I paid $150, this is my area. And again, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to understand this, how the public would view this. And I thought one of the residents wrote a beautiful document, Elaine from, used to be Yeltsin Manor, I don't remember her last name, but she went point by point by point. I thought it was well-stated, of all the concerns she would have, and I feel some of them are possible also. So I'm just, I don't know if I'm overthinking it or underthinking it, because I don't know how far people could take having an event on the beach, or an event in the park, and now suddenly, the beach, which I consider precious for the public, tourists as well as residents, suddenly they can't use part of the beach because these people paid $150 for a special event. Or am I just overthinking it, and these are gonna be small little events, and it's not gonna bother the public?
Well, that's part of the reason we've got this, because they have been occurring, and we haven't had any regulation about them in the past. So these companies, I don't know if we have size of weddings, they're 15 to 20, you know, typically, would you say, folks coming, they pull up their van, they're setting up these small weddings, South Beach, I mean...
If I may, Councilman Reiser, I think the intent of this is to try to strike some kind of balance between those two kinds of sides you mentioned. You know, historically, the city has done the best we can to try to work with people when they want to, they want to use these public spaces. As we all know, we've got some pretty amazing spaces here in South Haven, and we want to be able to share those with, at the same time, making sure that they're available to members of the public, and I think that's why we're proposing starting this new program or this new license agreement, if you will. But as a friendly reminder to council, this would be the first time we'd be instituting this type of agreement. In the past, we've had vendor agreements for different types of vendors, and we've also had special use permits. If you will, this is kind of a in-between type agreement that more fits these types of uses, but when it comes to specifics in terms of conditions, in terms of cleanup and such like that, as well as cost at $150, we're just looking to get this program started right now. If it's something that's not working down the road, there's nothing that says we can't go back and take another look at that, but I know at this point, there's been some input from the Parks Commission, there's input from the public, and staff's worked with the city attorney to put a licensed agreement that we feel like strikes a fair balance between those, those different types of events, if you will.
I do feel like there should be some specifications about size numbers, and yeah, just like Joe was saying, so do people now think that they can have a big reception with tables and food out there and music? I just don't see that in here as a thing that would tell them whether they can or cannot. And then, I also feel like there's a big difference between a yoga class, which is for the public benefit, and anybody can join it, and then a private wedding. So I don't know that they should be lumped in together at the same fee.
You look like you're gonna say something. I don't have anything to add.
Both a commercial, because both paid a fee to a third-party vendor to come and use the beach, that's why they're being treated the same. I understand the public benefit about a class, for the, for some of the public want to take advantage of that, but also, if a person didn't want to pay the fee, they didn't have to, but they can join on the beach, because it's open to all. It is not exclusive to that one vendor, and it's not exclusive. The only exclusive vending we have are with the North Beach and the South Beach concession, where there is no vending of the same materials on those beaches. Again, this is with a third-party vendor who has collected a fee, is providing a service for a small group that is not exclusive to anybody else on the beach. So should they want to also join the wedding or join the yoga class, they may, because it's open, so...
So is the yoga class a weekly meal, and they pay $150 a week, or what?
No, this is 150 for the annual year, so how many classes they have, usually there's a set schedule, and how many people they show up, or, so maybe a Monday in June, they have 10 people, but maybe in July they have 30 people, I'm not sure. The vendor only pays the 150 for the year, and then the coverage of the insurance liability also covers for that year.
I just personally don't feel like 150 per year for a wedding vendor is adequate.
Are you wanting to propose a new rate for everybody, or are you wanting to identify wedding vendors individually? I mean, what input do you have there?
I guess that would be something that we would have to discuss. I mean, I don't know off the top of my head, but I just, I do know that the wedding business is quite lucrative, that those services are expensive, and I don't feel like $150 for, I know it's not unlimited use of our beach, but I feel like it's quite, like, open for them to come profit off of our beaches. I just, I feel like there should be more to it than that.
And see, I don't think it's the money that's really important, whether it's 150 or 250, if you're having a wedding, it's not gonna make that much difference, and I don't think it should make that much difference to the city, this is not a moneymaker, we all agree. But not to have any kind of size limits or scope of this event, what would stop them again from having 200 people on South Beach and taking half of that, down by the walkway, taking half the beach? How could we ever stop it?
What would stop them is they'd have to get their agreement approved.
Right now, people don't think it's for a formal wedding, so they have a few, 10, 15 people, and it's always stayed that way, it's very, it's done, it's not a problem. Suddenly, we start charging, it makes me think that it's a formal contract, it's a formal agreement, now we can have a formal event, and we're gonna have a couple hundred people on the beach. Or am I overthinking?
Each agreement has to be, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I think you make a valid point there. We can actually, and that's what we're getting at with this forum, we can bring this to city council and dictate exactly what you said, there'll be limits. We can do that. We can open a discussion. The idea is, after one city council approved this, I send a draft to them and say, let's have a discussion, and I can bring up exactly the point you say, I can limit this. I can limit it to 15, 20, whatever.
How can we limit it on public, in a public park?
Because they're agreeing to our commercial use agreement. It's a contract to use our space.
But it's open to the public, is what I'm saying. If I'm gonna, if I come and tell you I'm gonna have a party of 12 people sitting on the beach for my ceremony, and I invite 200 other people and they happen to show up on the beach, what can we do about it?
No, you're, that's a valid point, you're absolutely right. And right now, that's what they can do right now. Right now, we don't have, I mean, you make a valid point, Steve.
Well, similar to a special event, when a special event comes before you, they have an estimate of the number of people they're expecting, but those can go higher or those can go lower. It's an event or a commercial use that's in the public, and I guess that's where we were intending to go with this. If council believes this doesn't, this needs more work, we'll happily pull it from the agenda and we can work on it more. It does mean that some of those folks were, can't get to right away, so we're gonna have to look at that further. It's, I mean, if council has that many questions, we'll be happy to revisit it and bring back.
So I think maybe the difference is, to Steve's point, it's one thing to have public beaches, I'm picking on beaches now, but it could be a park, the same thing. I'm picking on beaches now, but it could be a park, the same thing. So, you have a public beach or a public park and you have the public go there, whether they're from in-town, out-of-town, whatever the event is, that's one thing. But when you rent the space with a contract, and that's kind of like what we're doing, renting it, now it's not a public event, it's a private event on a public property. And so, now the public can't go and walk past or through or around that event if it's on the beach and suddenly the public beach is no longer a public, it's a private area of the beach. And that I have a real problem with because public beaches should stay public. We don't charge, like where I grew up, where we went New Jersey beaches, you got charged to go on the beach. These are public beaches. And even when I go to beautiful hotels in different places around the world, the hotels own that particular beach and they'll have big events. A lot of people fly to these islands and have big weddings. But this is not here. These are public beaches and I just worry about renting that space because again, I'm repeating myself, it becomes a private event on a public beach. Does that make sense?
I think I can, I'm processing your comment and I think Griffin or Kate can help me out. They're not renting the beach. It's still our beach, it's still a public beach. They're just getting permission to have a commercial venture on our beach. And like Kate mentioned, that wedding can go on, but I can walk through in my Speedo and ruin their pictures because it's still my beach too, that they don't close the beach. They don't, you know, they just have permission to be there.
That's absolutely correct.
Running a business. But everyone else can still be out there with their kite boards and their skim boards and your pails and all that and your beach balls.
And this is the attempt to strike the balance between some of those competing interests because we have commercial uses wanting to use the beaches. And if we don't have a way to appropriately, excuse me, appropriately regulate those uses or appropriately protect the city by getting certificates of liability or such from those uses. You're right, to an extent, they're still going to be able to go out there and do that. We as the city then don't have as much ability to influence or control those uses to try to strike the balance by preserving access for the public and making sure that it is still a public beach and still available and yet at the same time be good partners to the local businesses in the community that are also important.
And I guess with that in mind, and I don't know, and I don't know if this is it, but I would like to get some, something to recoup from them making money off our public beaches. This is getting close, but yeah.
And that's where, that's where the Parks Commission kind of kept throwing it around.
And that's what Bill said, they wrestled.
And again, it was, is it a percent, like we currently have a percentage with SOHA and then it was a question of how are we going to figure out what they're charging per wedding? And then we got pages after pages of what different wedding vendors were charging.
Yeah, Bill said the Parks Commission wrestled with this very same question, yeah.
Yes, it did. Originally, we went with a 20% and it still was, and there was some debate of should you charge more for one, less for another? And that didn't seem to go over as fair. There were some commissioners that did state that, other commissioners, it should be across the board. And again, we started then with another fee, well, how about this fee? And it ended up being, well, exactly, well, what is staff doing? And we are keeping track of these when weddings come, but our effort's been pretty minimal besides actually the maintenance we do, like Kate just mentioned. We do, in the city of South Haven, we clean that beach a lot. I spend a lot of manpower doing that, but we have a nice beach. And just from the pictures, actually Kate will share on her blog, we pick up a lot of, we pick up a lot of trash. So, that was, that's where we decided, well, what else do we do? And we brought up, well, license agreements, what do we do for special events? And as the mayor said, we charge $150 plus we charge $150 for any agreement that we do currently. If we have two property owners, recently, we did one where we had two property owners that wanted to utilize an abandoned right-of-way, there was a $150 charge for that. So, it is similar to what we're doing. We're just trying to cover the city attorney's costs and what minimal cost we have of processing it plus getting proof of liability insurance that the city has listed as additional insuri.
So, Bill, let me ask you a simple question.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a problem now with any of these people getting married, coming down, getting photographs, the people having yoga classes in the park? Because if we don't have a problem, if we have a problem, then let's do something. If we don't have a problem, why create all this red tape? Why charge people? Why go through all this legality if there's not a problem? Right now, to me, from my perspective, looking down South Beach, I've never seen a problem. Now, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't see a problem. So, I don't see why we're even going through all this.
Well, originally, like we've stated, it did start with this. We had, we were issuing special events for them, but it's not a special event. Special event, like Kate said, that's free to the public and that's what we've always done. This is actually somebody coming in and charging somebody to utilize and utilizing the public. That was the essence of it, what started this. And that's how it kind of morphed into, well, what do we originally do currently right now? And then it expanded to do the Parks Commission.
My second question, do other towns, other beach towns, does Traverse City, does Holland, does any of the other nice resort towns that have beaches, do they have something like this?
They do something different. Some of those ones actually do cordon something off and you do a space. But then actually, they're charging a lot more than staff's coming and doing it, but they're still then utilizing the same, requiring people to clean up. And then even some of those, when they're utilizing the space, I've done it before in other cities where they're just putting a tag up on something, I'd never really even seen staff come out. So, I mean, they're as minimal as well. But it was a very, we did present that, that was asked by the Parks Commission and we did bring in front of the Parks Commission various fees. But it was different from each community because each community decided to solve it in one different way. And this is just our staff's way of solving this. And like you said, it's not a problem, but it was brought up, well, we were charging them $150 for a special event. It's not a special event. So, that's why we went with this commercial use agreement. It's still the $150, so the same fee, and we're just making sure we get proof of insurance and...
Yeah, so part of it there, again, proof of insurance to make sure they've got liability. Two, we can build into the agreements and as we do, you know, size of events and whatnot, as we talked about. I think, what else?
Is there a minimum or a maximum number of events like that that would be allowed on any given week or day?
The maximum would be the maximum number city council or Parks Commission or whoever would be approving those agreements would approve.
Wait a minute, so you're saying every license, we're going to have to sit on city council and vote on?
Similar to a special event application. This is, this is not a blanket approval that anyone who then submits one of these license agreements gets to do it. This creates the process. And then when someone submits or fills out one of those license agreements, it's going to go before a body for permission, for approval. So, at that time, that's when factors such as how many other similar types of uses have been approved? Are we starting to see too many of these? Are we worried this is going to be too big of an event? Is this on a weekend that's already a popular weekend, so it's probably not going to be a good fit? Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This is not a blanket approval. This is creating the process so those types of decisions can be made moving forward.
Right, which is important.
Correct. And I'm sorry, would it be city council or Parks Commission?
City Council.
City Council.
Yep.
So, it's, in a way, it's similar to the process that we go through during almost every meeting for special event applications.
But if it's a wedding vendor, they wouldn't have to come in for every single wedding? It would just be per season? So, how do we, how do we know how many they're having?
Well, they actually call because we already track that already. They'll call, actually, a lot of times they're calling just to see, make sure no one else has booked that. And they call and we've already been doing that. We track that and that was presented in front of the Parks Commission as well. We're already doing that, we're already tracking that. This is just a fee.
And again, it gives us some ability to start understanding what's going on. And if we decide, I mean, for instance, we had a challenge here a few years back where we decided there were too many events along the riverfront and we reduced those numbers out of concern. So, if it gets to that point, it's easier for us to say, well, this is in place, we can ratchet it back. So, in the end, we want to preserve the public's interest in the beaches.
We did the same thing when it was the arts and crafts at Stanley Park. They wanted to have arts and crafts, I think, every weekend for four or five weekends and we said that was too many. I'm doing this from memory. So, it just concerns me to start giving licenses of people. It's almost inciting people to take a space on the beach for a specific event when we don't have a problem now. People walk out of St. Basil, go down to the beach, snap a few pictures, they go to wherever they're having the wedding reception. There's no problem. Now, suddenly, they have to get a contract, they have to have insurance. Now, it makes it more formal and you say people can walk through their wedding. I wouldn't want to walk through somebody's wedding if they were doing it and I'd feel like I'm imposing on it. But if someone just walks to the beach and gets a couple of pictures and leaves and there's no contract, it would seem easier. I just, I honestly think we're making more of this than we need to. We don't have an issue. Why go through all this?
Well, Joe, right now, in the summer, on the north side, there's often...
Often.
There's what? There are a lot of weddings with trucks and chairs set up and whatnot at the beaches that I go to with my kids. A lot of times, we have to maneuver around them to exactly not get in their pictures and stuff. So, they're there quite a bit.
So, you're saying there is an issue now?
It depends on...
Then I didn't know that, sorry.
Answering. I mean, some people wouldn't find it to be an issue, but...
I feel like at least it's a start and we can adjust it. So, I guess for me, this is the beginning. I'm good with it as it sits, so there's no other question, any other comments? George?
So, say somebody wants to do a wedding on the beach and they're the coordinator, they're getting paid to do this, but they don't go through the city, they just go and do it. Is there anything in our ordinance to, you know, have some kind of a fine or...
Yes, it's called...
Something we can do?
Yes, I, there is a specific provision that you have to, if you're having an organized event in the park, you have to have prior permission. I can find it specifically if you'd like or we can get back to you on that. But there is a specific provision in our ordinances about that.
I'm good, thanks.
If there's no other questions, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Let's roll call it just for ease of understanding.
Onuki?
No.
Reeser?
No.
Schlack?
No.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
No.
Arnold?
Yes.
Ann Smith?
Yes.
All right.
So, we'll...
Motion fails.
Well, if we're failed, we'll work on it, I guess, so, all right. Next, we've got city council, we ask to approve the following special event applications. We have special event 2022-07 Icebreaker 2023 to be held February 3rd to 5th, 2023 at various locations throughout the city.
I make a motion to approve special event 2022-07 Icebreaker 2023.
All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second. Anything new? Kate?
Well, Kathy's not here tonight, she's a little under the weather, so I'll be stepping in the place of Kathy as this will be done like similar icebreakers in the past, same things where, you know, we've got the street closures on Feeny Street. She's also asking for a street closure on St. Joseph and I think it's Michigan at the crossroads there where the cardboard sled races occur. Apparently, there's been, people turning down that dead-end road have really caused like a traffic jam and it's causing a lot of the residents not being able to get out. So, they're asking for about a three-hour lane closure over there and we can provide those barricades. Additionally, we had some issue with the horse-drawn carriage rides where the vendor apparently didn't want to do them on the streets, but did them in Bear Park. We just learned about this a couple of weeks ago. So, though, that won't be happening, they will be occurring on the pavement. We will have a route and they will be closely monitored, so there's no more incursions into the city park space. But other than that, it'll be a similar icebreaker with chili cook-off and ice sculptures and the cardboard sled races and such like that.
Sounds good, thanks. Public questions on this one? Comments? Nothing? Council comments? Nothing. Motion, second to approve special event 2022-07 Icebreaker. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, it's approved. Special event 2022-08 Memorial Day Parade 2022 to be held May, sorry, Monday, May the 30th, 2022 from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. starting at the corner of Center Street and Michigan Avenue and ending at Lakeview Cemetery.
Make a motion to approve special event 2022-08 Memorial Day Parade to be, 2022 to be held on Monday, May 30th, 2022.
Second. We've got a motion, we've got a second. Kate?
Again, this is following the form of we've done in years past. This will have a step-off at 9:00 a.m. This is being sponsored by the American Legion Post 49 and they've done a great job putting this together. We've got the same parade route, it's been itemized in here and it should be a good event.
Sounds good. Public questions, comments? Council questions, comments? We've got a motion, second to approve special event 2022-08 Memorial Day Parade 2022. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, it's approved. Next, city council, we ask to, actually, we're going to get an update from Greg Goodshow, Ph.D. and provide in some feedback on the ongoing work to advance fiscal year 2021-2022, priority number seven, which is the development of a community vision statement. Dr. Goodshow is in the crowd. Good evening and thanks for coming and sharing and we appreciate all the good work to get us here. So, I don't know, Kate, do you want to intro background? I don't know if you want to share a little bit and then I'll get Dr. Good on my care.
Absolutely. Dr. Goodshow has actually been in one of the few positions that he's been in my chair and he's also been in your chair. So, he's served as city manager as well as has been an elected official. He's also got his Ph.D. in doing organizational development. He was one of the proposals that the city council also selected to help us with our community vision statement. He has talked to all of you and me in helping us provide, work on a community vision statement. So, without any further ado, Dr. Goodshow.
Just one correction, I've never been an elected official. I think that she was confused by some of my nonprofit board service that I have been involved in, which is fairly similar to the role that you have here. I don't want to spend a lot of time with introductory comments here. You received from me as a part of your agenda packet for this evening's meeting, my preliminary report. And just to refresh your memories, I spoke to all of you some months back now. The process for, that was used for developing the draft vision statement was one that relied on individual interviews with each of you and as well as with the city manager and then a review of some of your planning documents. And what I was looking for in that were the common themes and ideas and issues that you were bringing forward. And not surprisingly, there were a number of things that you, you know, each of you referenced. And I brought those together then in the form of kind of the key findings that came out of those conversations and out of the review of your other planning documents. And again, these, I'm not going to read these to you, but I think some of these are important to highlight. Specifically, the different images of the town, depending on where you're looking. Is this a traditional small city? Is this a resort community? Is it a retirement community? That kind of thing. You have aspects of those that are here in South Haven. How you bring all those together to have a community that has the stability and resilience that you all indicated that you wanted to have. There are issues that you identified and those are highlighted in the second bullet point here under key findings. And then finally, dropping down to the fourth bullet point, this really kind of gets to a summary of where I felt that you were interested in going from a vision statement standpoint. So, economic resilience and stability, greater demographic diversity, continuing to emphasize your area's natural resources and the preservation of those and providing a welcoming environment for your residents, your families and visitors alike. I provided to you then two draft vision statements and you see one here and I will just quickly read through this for you. The city of South Haven will play a key leadership role in building and maintaining an economically resilient and demographically diverse community that values its history, its culture, its neighborhoods and its people, that preserves and celebrates the natural beauty of its surroundings and that welcomes visitors, new families and new businesses. After some feedback from your administrators, I came up with a second draft that Griffin's advancing here for you. This is more of a bullet point and it provides a little greater specificity in terms of what some of those key characteristics of the community, the South Haven of the future, would look like. Some of the same language, it's not quite the, it doesn't have, it's not quite as fancy as the first one, I guess, is the way, the way I would characterize it. But does cover some of the same points, in some cases, with a little bit more emphasis than what was... was included in the original statement. That's a quick summary, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, but the real purpose of this evening's meeting with you is for you now collectively to have discussion among yourselves and to provide additional information and input to me, so that we can come up with a more finalized version of this report, and specifically of the vision statement for your use. So, Your Honor, those are all the preliminary comments that I have at this point.
Oh, that's great. So, then, just to clarify, so from here, I mean, you're looking for feedback on this, and I guess, I know one question that is going to eventually come up, it's kind of like, okay, so what then? What's kind of maybe a next step?
Okay. The next step of that, then, is to take the input that I have, refine as necessary the vision statement, come up with a single statement that reflects what you would like to see, that goes into then the final version of this report. I wouldn't expect that most of the stuff after the first couple of pages is not going to get revised, but, so the main thing is for you then to get that final draft of a vision statement, and I presume, and this is really up to you and your staff here, but I presume at some point you'll have an actual motion to approve that, and that then becomes the formal official vision statement for the city.
Okay, sounds good. Who wants to jump in? Anybody want to? I, I'll just start off by saying that I thought the work was well done, so I'll start with that, and I was impressed with what we got. So, you want to start out? Joe, go ahead, jump up.
First thing I'd like to say is I want to compliment you on the executive summary and the whole report. I don't know how you did it as an outsider, but I've read that, and I felt like you must have lived here 30 years. I thought you really hit on the points, or the City Council staff gave you a lot of good input, so you understood. Either way, I thought you hit it. I would like to have one small change, and that's it. Under bullet point number two, because it's easier to do the bullet point than the paragraph, celebrate the diversity of the residents, I would like it to say something to the effect to add equity and inclusion, because that's a D E I, that hits it all, because diversity without inclusion, diversity without equity is not good anyhow, so I would add that. And then the second comment, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say is, before I make any more comments, and I don't really think I do have any more, I'd love to hear what the residents think, because this vision statement, of all the things we've discussed, this is the city, and it should be not written by, but it should surely have the input of the residents, because this is going to say who we are and where we want to go, and that should be, if ever were the conduit sitting up here for the residents, to me, this is the one time we should be taking the input from the residents and then creating a statement. So I would really like to know what people think in this room and in the community, because this, this I've been pushing for, for several years, I know the mayor has, and I just think it's, for the public, for the outsider, for the tourists, they can look at this, and this should be someplace where they can't miss it in the city, but this should say who we are and what we want to be going forward, and it's important. That's all.
I'd agree. And we are going to take public comment, and we can do that now, which is fine, we can start with that, so you're going to lap, I'm going to have you share that podium, maybe jump over with Griffin over there, and let's jump in, let's get some public comments, and if council has comments in between, interject. So, public comments on this vision statement, if you'd like to come on up, state your name and address, and, come on up. You'll have five minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. Scott? Vika Anderson, 457 LaGrange. I can't read that, so I don't know what the vision statement is.
I think there's actually, there's two of them, there's the first one.
That's the second one.
That's the second one. The first one, I don't know if you can get them both on there. Oh, you'd be good. Oh, oh, sorry, I thought I would be like high-tech. We can go back and forth, there you go. There's one.
Would you like to have my copy?
I would like, like to see your copy, so I would be able to actually know what the vision is.
Excuse my underwriting and little notes.
Thank you. That's, at this point, I have to read this and find out what my brain is thinking.
That's good, yep, it's all in the packet, which is all there, that's good, okay. And Ms. Rosalie, come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. Hello. Rosie Placati, 559 Monroe Boulevard. I was quite shocked when I saw this. I think when this was first coming, I think I texted Kate and said, please tell me that you're going to open this up to the public. In my last city, when I was on council, we developed a vision statement, and we held many meetings where we invited the public, and we did hire a facilitator, of course. So I was quite shocked that it just included you guys. Not that I don't trust you, but I was quite shocked it just included you guys, really. Yeah, that's an understatement. So, but then I put it in the context that it was just maybe for the city, that this was you guys telling us what your vision is. And I thought, well, that's weird, because I don't know how you're going to present this. Is this the city's vision? Is this City Hall's vision? Because that's how it stands now. So I would hope that maybe we could have input, that maybe we can take a step back. I mean, nothing is wrong here, I agree with all those things. I think it sounds rather generic, like it was written by someone, maybe, sir, your work is wonderful, and I did, your background is amazing. This isn't in any way criticizing you. I think it, it just sounds generic. I don't think we are generic, we're a city of less than 4,000 people. We're, we're, we are fun, we are different, we are made up of long-timers and, and short-timers and weird people and loud mouths. So I love it, though, and I do love many pieces of it, so I think maybe if we could have some input. I don't care for that tagline at all, but that's my opinion, but I can see where you had some input, I love some of the things that you said about it, your concerns, I read those, those stood out amazingly, and I think we all shared that. But that is my input, so if we do have some, maybe, I don't know how you're going to facilitate that now, it sounds like you hired somebody to do this and present this, but yeah, I was really surprised that that's how you all did it. So those are my comments, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Rosalie. And again, that's what we're here for, is to take comments on it, so bring them.
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. I just want to echo what Rosalie has stated. I believe a vision statement, when you read it, you should feel where you're included in that vision statement. And although it may be a great vision statement, when I saw it or read it, it just doesn't seem like it connects with part of the community. I think I would ask to, the council to step back and get more input, because when it comes to diversity, equity, and inclusion, when it comes to matters concerning, I believe, a portion of our community, it just don't connect to me. I just don't see a shared vision there. And so I would ask the council to just, to step back and really have some more formal meetings, maybe informal meetings, to, to get more input from across sector of our community. It just seemed like it represents a portion of it.
Okay, thanks for your comments.
Danielle Veenstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard. And my concern is, they're great words, they're beautiful words, I actually like the bulleted point, number two version, because you've got action words at the beginning of each statement, separating out what the city plans to do. But I've been part of too many organizations who come up with mission statements, vision statements, put it on a piece of paper, put it on a plaque on a wall, pat themselves on the back, and nothing changes. And that is my concern, is that we have come up with a vision statement that does not, as Rosalie and Joe both said, belong to the citizens created by our input, and who is going to create and celebrate and vision? When you've created this statement, you've put all of that onus on yourselves. So a year from now, I expect to see a created diversity, I expect to see housing, and all y'all sitting up there, it's on you, because you didn't ask us what we think we need.
Thank you much.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. I echo, and as I've provided comments, the concerns raised. I also acknowledge the wonderful work that has been done, but as I indicated, the lack of public input has allowed several things to go undiscussed, and my bigger concern kind of echoes off of what Danielle said, is the burden's on the City Council. So the vision statement can be wonderful, but who's going to actually abide by it? Just recently, we see the city not abiding by the values that were discussed in the proposal. Ethics code, ordinances, statutes are intended to define and limit wrongdoing, and organizations' values in contrast are designed to encourage right-doing. Values applicable to a municipal government might include accountability, transparency, efficiency, professionalism, and civility, among many others. What has happened in the city of South Haven just this year, as you're working on this vision statement? The approval of a second floor on a garage that really should have been found violative of our ordinances. So we can do a vision statement, but who's going to make sure that the city and the city staff follow it? That is our concern, and I think that's a key thing, is to ensure that the citizens are protected from the vision statement. One idea I had was the city of South Haven will address concerns of residents and future actions and decisions, and readily give access to public records upon which decisions are made. The latter part is because when I asked who signed the permit for this, that construction, I was told I had to file a FOIA request. That is completely unacceptable response to that. It was to look at a simple permit. Regardless of what ends up being our vision statement, I encourage the use of clearly-defined terms that must, that will prevent various opinions on those same terms. Right now, as I noted in my submission, the terms have, are open to too many interpretations, which then result in unclear goals and objectives, which result in inefficiency, and most importantly, wrongdoing. The city is, council is to unite its residents, not divide us, and I certainly hope that that will happen. And we can use the great talent that we have in our city, we're always talking about all the great talent in our city, we have the talent to lift ourselves up by our bootstraps. And in fact, I see Ryan Cervettus here tonight to talk about housing options. It would be wonderful if the city starts embracing its citizens, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? My God, nobody. All right, so let's go back, council. Thanks for coming back up. So again, this is our first, you know, sit back on this. Any other council comments on process?
I like the idea of getting feedback from the community, I don't know whether we could do an open house type thing.
Yep, it's all, all possible. Like, that's kind of what we're looking for tonight. This was, this was bringing back, the start was this group, to get our thoughts, to get our ideas, because we were elected to sit up here and, you know, take these things true. And as a council, again, we don't have one of these right now, right? Haven't had one. So that's been a desire of several of us, to have something that's more, more of a guiding statement as we look, we've got a master planning process coming up, wouldn't it be nice if we had something in place? So that's why we started to go through this process. So here we are. So we can definitely have, any thoughts on public input?
Well, when this topic was, was first discussed with me, I provided several different options for how the organization might approach that, and that included various opportunities to engage more members of the public than what this provided for. And the decision was made to go the direction that you've gone here. Now, that doesn't mean that you can't step back and engage members of the public, that's entirely up to you. What you would have here, if you continued this process, is a statement that reflects the vision of the organization that you had, not necessarily reflecting the sentiments of all of the members or different segments of the community, but you can always, and you should, do something like that as a part of your master plan update process that you'll be undertaking here in the next year or so. You could do that as a separate action, a separate forum that you could provide, there are a number of different ways that that can be done, but it's not within the scope of what was decided to, you know, that led to the approach that we've taken here. So it's really kind of your call at this point, if you would like to step back and say, we'd like to get more public input, here are some of these main themes, what else do we want to hear from the public? There are opportunities to do that, and you can hold off on finalizing this if you should decide to do that as well. So it really, it's really your call is to, I think we want to be clear, this reflects your sentiment, the sentiment of you as the head of this organization. It doesn't necessarily incorporate some of the sentiment that might come from the community, but it's your call then at this point as to whether you want to stop the process, let's get that sentiment at this time, or you want to say, let's continue with this, but, you know, understand that it's going to be subject to revision as we go through our master plan process or whatever it is. It just depends on how you want to, how you want to approach that entire process. I think it's valuable to have the vision statement, I think that it gives a sense as to where you're wanting to go. On its own, it doesn't accomplish anything. You have an annual goal-setting process that you use, that's one of the tools that you would use to implement the vision by identifying specific projects and so forth, to make sure that it does not just collect dust on a shelf someplace, just hang on a plaque on a wall. That's not what you want to do with it. You want it to guide you in future decisions that you make. So I think it's entirely up to you, and, you know, I would suggest, Your Honor, that maybe that's the first point of discussion here before you go into more of the specifics is, do you want to stop the process at this point, and look at how you could incorporate some additional opportunities for public input and bring that to you as well, before you get into trying to refine the draft statement that I have. I'm not telling you, Your Honor, I'm not telling you how to run your meeting, it's your meeting, I'm just offering that suggestion.
That's kind of where I was going, I guess, kind of why I started, when I did, it's kind of like, where does this take you? But I guess if we need more public input, I would prefer to have that input. We're in no rush to, you know, push this thing through, this was just a start, so public input would be perfect.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, I can also actually go back and pull up, this was the memorandum that was brought before council at the time when you all reviewed the, the initial scopes of what Greg submitted for you all, and just as a friendly reminder, what was decided by council at that time to move forward with was option A. At that time, option B, or section B, described a much more in-depth process for developing a vision statement for the community as a whole, as opposed for the city of South Haven as an organization. And some of the things we discussed at that time were, instead of a two or three-month process, we talked about a six-to-18-month process. Obviously, there was an additional cost associated with, with paying a facilitator to, to work through that, that time as well. So if it's helpful, I just wanted to add at this point that, you know, Greg, Greg was gracious at the time to kind of put together a proposal that included options for, for both of those, so if that is something you all want to revisit or explore, again, kind of a different process than what was decided at that time, we do have a proposal that lays out a process to do that. So I'll leave it to you, but we do have that, if that's something we want to discuss at, at some point.
Okay, sounds good.
I never expected tonight for us to vote or make a decision anyhow. I always thought tonight was our first look as a group of what was prepared, and then get input from the community, and get more input. I remember having six meetings about the width of a driveway on a resident's home. Surely, we can spend more than one meeting.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
On an important document, so.
Yeah, that's why this is just a.
As I said 10 minutes ago, I didn't expect. So, as I said 10 minutes ago, I didn't expect this ever to be the final version. So, surely we want to get input from the residents. The other thing I do want to take exception to that was said tonight, and this bothers me. Mary, when you stood there and said all the things that are wrong with this town, you have every right to do that. You can talk about lack of transparency. You can talk about this and that, and that one resident you're talking about, I couldn't agree with you more. But the vision statement is where we want ideally to be, where we want to go. Example, our country is said to be the land of the free. This is far our history, far from the land of the free for all individuals. We all know that. We don't have to look any further than five minutes watching the news about our country. But our country has a vision, what it wants to be. And that's how I look at this. It's what we want to be, where we want to go. It's just a general guiding principle. So, it shouldn't be perfect, Mary. It should be imperfect, but this is what we want to be, if we could be perfect. And surely, we should get everybody's input, all the community. And the last thing, it's great that all of you, including you, Mary, stood up and said, "You don't like us making your decision," because we shouldn't make your decision. So, it's great. That means, like I always say, we don't have apathy in this community. We want the people in this community to stand up and say, "Here's what we want," or "Here's what we don't want." And one of them is the vision statement. So, I'm glad they don't want this to be the final version tonight. That's fine. I just don't know how to proceed. You know, I don't know what the best steps are.
If I may, Your Honor, to respond to that. Again, we can revisit, your staff and I can revisit the other options that were presented. And we can talk about some other things, since we've done this part of it. There may be some other ways in which we can provide a methodical approach to getting a broad-based community input regarding their vision in much the same, you know, the questions that I posed to all of you are questions that can be posed to other members of the community. And you can do that in a variety of different ways, you know, whether you do it through focus groups, or have opportunities for larger group sessions. And those are things that we could talk about, and I'm happy to work with your staff to come up with some ideas for that. I mean, not all of you have weighed in on this, but it seems like the sentiment is in favor of getting some additional, providing some additional opportunities for the community to offer its input. And so, you know, there's nothing wrong with our stepping back at this point. And again, I don't want to, certainly don't want to speak for your city manager here, although, again, after doing this for 40 years, it's a little hard to break that habit of recognizing that, you know, that she's in charge of the administration, and the one whom you are depending on to give you advice. And so, maybe I should defer to her at this point. But I am happy to work with your staff to come up with some other alternatives, to provide you that additional background and support.
Yeah, I would be interested. So, I guess if there's thoughts, consensus on getting additional input, give us some alternatives, and, because we're just getting feedback tonight to give to staff. Staff's looking for direction from us on, do we got it? Do we need more? And that's why we're, this is just the first meeting.
That's right. So, this is a council priority, and we've been trying to effectuate this. I know it's a process. We're also looking for, what does council want? So, this is a council-led initiative. So, we're trying to figure out what you're needing, or what you want further. So, if you have specifics that you'd like to see, if you could let us know, we'll work with Greg, and we'll bring you back a further proposal.
So, basically, where we're at is he's done his job, what we've authorized him to do to this point. If we want more, we pay more.
That's right.
Thank you.
I haven't, Mr. Schlick, I haven't quite completed it, because I still owe you the final report. So, if there's going to be some additional sources of input into that, then yeah, that's something we can talk about, but.
All right.
I'd be really interested to see how the community input stacks up against what we've talked about, and kind of correlated together, to see if we are on a similar wavelength, or if we're off in some way that we need to adjust. So, I feel like it'd be really healthy to get more input from the people that we represent.
I'd agree. So, I guess, bring us back some ways for input, and.
All right. We can do that.
We'll revisit. Everyone agrees?
Yes.
Got it. We got some, yeah. So, bring us back some more stuff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure working with all of you, your staff included on this. It's, I have enjoyed this process, and hope to keep moving you along in the direction that you want to go.
It's a good start. So, I appreciate it. Thank you again. All right. Next, city council, we ask to consider the approval of a proposal for, sorry, from Inclusive Performance Strategies to conduct an equity assessment to advance fiscal year 2021-22, priority number four, which is the diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts, in the amount of $39,102. And on this one, I just need a motion, if we like it.
I'll make a motion to approve a proposal from Inclusive Performance Strategies to conduct an equity assessment to advance fiscal year 2021-2022, priority number four, diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts, in the amount of $39,102.
I'll second.
All right. We've got a motion. We've got a second. Kim Wise, shuffled up. Is this you?
Griffin and I have been working on this together for the last year, actually. We've been putting a lot of effort into this, so this is definitely not something that we just, you know, threw a dart at the dartboard and said, "Let's go with them." So, in your agenda, on page 108, I did want to point out, we do have an update on our diversity dashboard. So, our hiring stats for the city, taking a look at January 2020, for all of our staff, including full-time, part-time, and seasonals, at that point, we were 6% minority. As of last month, that has moved up to 12% minority. For full-time staff only, January 2020, we were 6% minority, and March 2022, we were 9% minority. So, we are slowly seeing that increase. We are trying to make some steady improvements on that. If you go to the next page, page 109, you will see a longer view. So, going back to January 2017, we were at 5% full-time minorities, and again, as of last month, we were 9%. Below that, we do have additional DEI initiatives that we've been steadily working on this past year, additional training for our police officers, our leadership team, reaching out and working with other community members, Kathy Wagman, Chamber of Commerce Director, Laura Underwood, the HR Director over at Viber Acoustic. And just recently, our Assistant City Manager was appointed to the statewide Michigan Municipal Executives DEI Committee. So, congratulations to him on being appointed to that. We also understood that council wanted us to take a look at equity assessment as well. You know, we can sit here and try to make all these improvements ourselves, but we really need to have an outside source, subject matter expert come in and take a look. So, what we did is we started reaching out to different folks that we knew, to see, you know, who are you using? And then we did some research as well. What we found is a lot of the partners that we were reaching out to had great tools, United Way, Talent 2025, Michigan Department of Civil Rights. They had great tools, but they didn't necessarily do equity assessments. So, we started looking even further into that. And that's when we met with GARE. It's the Government Alliance on Race and Equity. They work with local governments throughout the U.S. They typically do consulting work and equity assessments, but they are growing at such a rapid pace, because this is becoming a demand throughout the U.S., that they've had to put that on hold. So, they were not able to give us a quote for equity assessment at the time. We also met with the Lake Shore Ethnic Diversity Alliance, LIDA. They were able to give us some information about their training that they do, conferences that they do, and they do an equity assessment. The cost on that was going to be approximately $400. And when we took a look at that, we saw it probably wasn't going to be as in-depth as what the council was looking for. We know that the city of Kalamazoo did an equity assessment with the Michigan Public Health Institute. That one came at a cost for them of approximately $145,000, and that was funded by a lot of private money. We thought that was going to be a little bit outside of our price range. So, we did take a look at Inclusive Performance Strategies, IPS. We've met with them multiple times throughout the last, I'd say, six months, and we've been very impressed with them. We were referred to them by Robin Afric, the DEI Director at Ottawa County. So, Ottawa County, West Ottawa, and Grand Rapids both used IPS, and they've done a great job with that. Now, you know, $39,000, that's a large price tag. Council has put this as one of their priorities. They budgeted for it for this current fiscal year and next fiscal year. This is not a one-and-done. This is not going to be, "Let's come in, do a quick little survey, call it good, sit on a shelf and call it good." But this is going to be a year-long project. So, that is part of the reason why that price tag is up there a little bit. It's also a holistic approach. It's not just looking at HR policies. It's looking at city government as a whole. What can we do? What we liked about them, too, is that they come in here with the attitude of, "We're not looking to blame anybody. We're not looking to shame anybody. We're here to help you identify what's working well, and then what you can improve upon." So, we were really impressed with that. So, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
If I can add just a couple other things, there is a page in your packet on 111 that really does show the summary of the work that's being proposed to be conducted over the next year, in a pretty detailed form, talking about some of the setup, the strategy, the intentionality behind the work that's being proposed. It also talks about the training and the city council work sessions that would be incorporated into this. As the elected officials, the elected body for the city, you all obviously are the leaders. So, a lot of this work does start with all of you. But as staff, we want to make sure you all are set up to be successful. So, there are three proposed workshops associated with this work, starting with a setting-the-stage session, getting a common understanding of what are we doing and why are we doing it. One of the things that I like to highlight from this organization, and the work that they've done with both Ottawa County and Kent County, is because they do a holistic look, they are able to use this information to help various aspects of a community. For example, something Ottawa County and Kent County have really used their DEI work to emphasize is how important it is to promote economic development in a region, to be competitive economically, having a welcoming, and a positive, a diverse, and an inclusive community. They've seen tangible outcomes related to the economic success of some of their businesses in those regions. So, being able to learn from professionals how this is important, and why this is important, and where it's going to take an organization, is really a key part of that setting-the-stage, that phase-one city council engagement aspect. But there would also then be project updates and feedback sessions throughout, so you all are actively involved in providing leadership for this work over the approximate year of that program. But with that being said, I also really just want to recognize Kim in front of you all this evening. She's done a lot of work to make this happen. I know it's something that she's been trying to enhance in the organization since she's gotten here, and I just feel very lucky to be able to jump on board and see what we can do to try to move forward city council's priority. But with that being said, you do have the entire proposal in the packet, as well as some other backup information or background information from some of the other organizations we spoke with. And with that, we will do the best we can to try to answer any questions you might have.
And in regards to those other organizations, we do plan to partner with them regardless. So, GARE, Talent 2025, LIDA, we plan on partnering with all of them as well.
Sounds good. All right. We've got the motion. We've got the second. Counsel, would you prefer to hear from the public first on this one? Get public comments first? Joe, you want to speak first?
About a year ago, and Joe Wilkins, Pastor Wilkins, can tell me the exact date. It's on my phone. But Pastor Wilkins, myself, and a few other people from town, met with Dorala Bonner, the diversity manager in Kalamazoo. I think it was a city manager, and Joe has the list. But we had a meeting with them, a virtual meeting, and it lasted about an hour and a half. And after the meeting, I think, we told Kate and the mayor the results. And the one thing, above all else, I got out of the meeting was, before you can begin change a city, if it needs to be changed in any way, shape, or form, before you can begin to enact training and anything else you want to do, first, you have to know where you're at right now. And for most cities, they're blind to where they're at. And I, as a white male sitting here, as my wife reminds me, I don't know what women are up against. I sure as hell don't know what minorities are up against. I can read it. I can have a friend tell me, but we don't know. We don't know what it's like for them to live in this community, or any other minority, whether it be who you love, or the religion you believe in. So, I think this is so important for this community, because we have to know objectively from an outsider, hopefully, and I trust your ability to pick a good company, but we have to have an outsider tell us where we're at, and how the residents feel. We talked about a vision statement, how residents feel. This is much more important to me, is to find out how they feel about living in this town. Do they feel they're equal? Do they feel they're included? So, I couldn't support this enough. And down the road, yeah, it'd be great to have the city council be trained. But first, let's find out where we're at as a community, and that's why I'm excited about doing it. And you hit it right on the nose. It's exactly, because I talked to them again today, it's $145,000 and some change they spent. Now, it's a whole lot bigger city. That's $100,000. We're $4,000. So, we shouldn't expect to spend that much. But I think I've heard some residents say $39,000 is a lot. I hate spending money. You've heard me up here complain. You've heard me at different meetings complain, Kim, but I can't think of a better way to spend our money than to make sure that the people living here feel good about living here, and good about the other residents that live here. So, I couldn't support this enough.
Okay. Very good. Shall we get some public comments? Public comments. Anybody from the public like to comment? If so, come on up. State your name and address.
Again, Vicky Anderson, 457 LaGrange. How do I feel about South Haven? It's not like it was 100 years ago. I know a lot of people who would love to live in South Haven. Nobody can afford it. I mean, we're, for instance, okay, I'm almost 80 years old. I was married. I have very little money coming in, you know. The only money I have is from Social Security, and that's $810 a month.
Okay. Just to keep you on point here, we're talking, are you going to bring this back to our diversity, equity, inclusion effort? That's what this is about right now.
Well, it's, a lot of people can't afford to live in South Haven, because it's so expensive. And it's good that we're trying to have places where people can live, like teachers, you know, other people, and the people who can't get jobs here, except that they're really cheap, you know?
Yeah, okay.
So, that's, you know, that's one of the things that if I couldn't afford to have people living with me, I would have to sell my house and get rid of it, and move someplace else.
Can I kind of hold you right there? Again, we are talking about diversity, equity, inclusion?
Yes, that too. Yeah. Yeah, we need to be with the rest of the people who live here, and love them, you know? And I do. I've got lots of friends who are all different kinds, you know? And it's a lot of people who can't afford to live here, because it's a very expensive place. So, there's a lot of people that are moving out to Pullman, for example, or other small places. But if they have to live here for some reason, there's got to be some way of helping other people. And this has to do with places to live.
Thanks for your comments.
And I'm happy about what the city has been doing with this. But then I see people And I'm happy about what the city has been doing with this, but then I see people, you know, some places, it's 100 for one bedroom apartments, $1,500 a month, $1,500? That's insane. Who allows that?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
For this proposal, it's not a community-wide equity and diversity, this is for South Haven as an employer, correct? That's what this proposal's for?
It's for the city of South Haven as an organization.
As an organization.
Yes, so part of the strategy and part of the work that would be done here and part of the training that we've had conversations with this vendor about is for a community to effectively be leaders in the DEI space, you first have to get your house in an order. So if we are not comfortable or if we are not confident, if we are not intentional about what we are doing as the city of South Haven, we would struggle to be leaders in that space and perpetuate that work into the community.
And to expand upon that, it's not just going to be HR policies though, it's going to be, you know, it could be building department, things like that. So they will be looking at different policies that we have throughout the organization that could impact the community.
How they would impact the community, yes. So it's everything from, yes, HR, but how are customer service folks trained? How are policies put into place? Are they available and accessible to people? As well as conducting assessments of the employees and the teams that we have here, members of boards and commissions, there's a multifaceted approach that's discussed in more detail in the proposal, but Steve Drakely, it's our organization first.
Were there any other public questions or comments again specifically to the DEI proposal before us? Come on up. Thank you. Come, state your name and address and ask that question.
Rosalie Placati, 559 Monroe Boulevard, and how kind of you. Yeah, I was asking about that, it occurred to me. Kim, and I support your proposal, and I know how much work you've put into it. You know, I've sat on planning, I know you've sat on parks, and we've been on commissions. Could any of this assessment actually and further trainings be available to the volunteers that sit on these boards? Because, you know, we're interacting with the public, you know, it's, you know, it would be beneficial that if, you know, as the city, we're extensions of the city, and I was just wondering if that would be available and could that be a requirement of volunteers? I know we walk a fine line.
The great thing about the government alliance on race and equity, kind of moving away from the assessment for a second, that is available to all of our city employees and all of our elected officials. And then we could also check with them as far as appointed officials as well.
I think that would be really worth it, because if you want to be a team, your volunteers are part of your team. And I think that would be awesome, actually.
And that's a great point that Kim mentioned. The assessment is one piece of the pie, if you will, and that's why, bluntly, that's why it's taken us a little longer than you may have expected to bring this update before you all, is we wanted to be able not only to propose, to bring a holistic proposal before you all in terms of the equity assessment, but also give you all a holistic update in terms of the work that the city has been doing over the last year to advance city council's priority. So I think there are some exciting things in the memo that staff put together for council and the public to see in terms of what some of these other new partnerships are going to be able to bring to the table as well. They obviously don't have the price tag and they don't have the time commitment that an equity assessment would have right up front, but I think over time, they're going to be equally important pieces of the city's holistic DEI effort, if you will.
I'd agree. Any other public questions, comments on this one?
Questions on whether or not we support it or not?
Well, first your name and address, and really just any comments at all, Joe.
Okay, any comments, okay. Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. I just want to read, I want to thank Kim for her proposal. This was something I asked for a couple of years back after putting together a meeting back on January 22, 2001. One thing that I used to hear Kate or staff say that, you know, they encourage the community or the council to go out and benchmark or look for practices out there that would help this community versus just complaining, try to be a part of the solution. So I went out and talked to Dorla, I met with Dorla Bonner, who's got hired as a DEI director out of Kalamazoo, put together Zoom meeting with city manager James Risma, the assisting chief of police Victor Green, the chief of police Natalie Thompson, Joe Reiser, the mayor, I believe, and it was one other particular person there, I think, my memory is certainly right, but we talked about this, and it's so important, and I just wanted to quote something that he said. And I think Mr. Reiser mentioned it earlier about how important it is to know where you're at if you're trying to move forward, you have to first identify where you're at. But James Risma was the city manager of Kalamazoo, I want to quote a couple of things he said. "Systemic racism is unfortunately deep rooted in government institution. We understand the words are not enough, and we must demonstrate our commitment to transformational change with credible action to change policies, promote community healing, and increase trust, and ensure community members are treated fairly and are truly valued," unquote. That stuck with me because a lot of times as minority, you don't feel that here in South Haven. So I thought we ended up with, you know, a lot of great information that came out of Kalamazoo, Kalamazoo is leading the area in DEI. Out of that whole vision and push, and they were trying to do this based on their vision statement, they created a DEI position. Dorla Bonner has been very active at trying to bring all this together in Kalamazoo, and the first thing that she asked for was a DEI assessment. And so I stood before the council requesting that, so I'm happy that you submit this proposal because we finding out that a lot of times this is deep rooted in your policies and a lot of other things. And so without the assessment to find out where you truly are, you can't possibly get to where we're trying to go. So the assessment is very important, as not only does it deals with higher practices, but it looks at the EEOC policies and other things that might need to be addressed going forward. And so I am totally in agreement with this DEI assessment. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else?
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. I would like to thank Kim for the additional information that she provided tonight. It helped understand the proposal much better than the staff report, although the staff report had a lot of information. My questions are based on a comment at the previous budget meeting with regard to the city needing to be good stewards and fiscally responsible. I was just wondering, you had mentioned it's budgeted, I was wondering how much percent of the budget this is? And I'm looking forward to the fact that possibly appointed volunteer board members might be able to participate in other options. I was also curious with the benefit of starting it right away versus learning more from some of the programs you spoke about and with the recent appointments of the city manager and assistant city manager to positions, you know, the benefit of starting it right away versus later? And I was just curious how much they have done with the smaller towns. So reference with Kalamazoo and Holland, which are significantly larger, but how many towns have they worked on with our size? And how, because I think our town, city would have significantly different challenges, especially with regard to bringing companies here versus larger towns. So that would just help have a more fully understood decision, and I am looking forward to their involvement with appointment to boards, which in my experience have been a little too heavy on the male side versus the female despite qualified females applying for open positions. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. I want to answer, I mean, as far as the budget question, off the top of your head.
I mean, we can answer the budget question relatively easily. My understanding is for the fiscal year we're currently in, there is $30,000 budgeted, and my understanding is there's $30,000 budgeted in the proposed fiscal year 22, 23 budget. So, I mean, it would be a significant portion of the budgeted money, but we're comfortable making the recommendation, but ultimately, at the end of the day, it's city council's decision whether or not to move forward with a proposal of this size. In regard to the question or the comment about the proposed vendor, this vendor has largely to date worked with larger communities. It was actually, one of the other reasons it took so long to get a proposal finalized is they are starting to see that to have the impact they want, they want to move into smaller communities, and we would actually be one of their first. And I think Kim and I are actually quite proud of being able to bring that proposal before you all. This is, for local governments, particularly in Michigan, still a newer thing to do. There are a few communities who have done it. I am not aware of any other communities our size who have taken a step like this. So I think, I think we're comfortable with the conversations that we've had with this vendor and introducing them to the South Haven community and them going back and deciding if this was a project they wanted to take on, because there is a lot of demand right now, that it could be a good partnership and that the fact they see what's special about South Haven and would want to take a step to come work with us too is something we can be proud of.
Sounds good, appreciate it. Any other public comments? Now we'll get to staff comments. Nothing, okay. Council comments? Anybody else?
I love that we're kind of ahead of the curve on this instead of trying to play catch-up. That makes me really happy. And I know you said it's a significant part of our budget, but I feel like we can't really be effective in doing other things until like Joe and Joe have said, until we know where we are. It just makes sense to spend that money in this way, so I'm very much in support of this.
Agreed, and I'll just, I'll echo, I appreciate the work that's been done and the recognition by this body, by staff, that we will, you know, there's more we can continue to learn, we will learn more, we will bring that information, and we will make change. So I am in favor of this proposal as well.
I'd like to say something. I'm also in favor of this proposal for many reasons, but one reason that sticks out the most to me is that it's personal. I recently had to deal with a situation, and even my son dealt with a situation where he, you know, he was faced with racism on the job. Even I have been personally, I have faced some things, even in our own community, and I think that it's time for people to stand up and be honest. And I think this is a good step, and I'm glad that Kim was willing to stand up for this. I think this is a good cause, and $39,000 is nothing when it goes through the lives that'll be affected. It's more important about how people feel. $39,000 is nothing when I'm being humiliated because I'm black. That's nothing. You can't compare how someone feels with money. Money is not everything. So when it comes to this, yes, I'm 100% behind, I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional about it, but I'm for this, and I'm glad we're doing this. And I hope that the community understands that we need this, and I hope that the city council understands that we need this. Everybody does not know how it feels. I heard someone say, I don't know how it feels to be a minority. We have to ask someone, because in 2022, at 52 years old, I cannot believe some of the things that I'm experiencing, that I've never experienced before in my life.
Thanks for your comments. Is there anybody else? And if not, we've got a motion, we've got a second to approve the proposal from Inclusive Performance Strategies. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, it is approved. Next citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda. So if you'd like to talk about something that we have not already talked about, please come on up, state your name and address, and you'll have up to five minutes to chat with us. And if someone talked about something we've already talked about, tell them.
Rosalie Placati, 559 Monroe Boulevard. I haven't been here in a while, so, you know, I thought I'd make it worth my time.
Welcome back, Rosalie.
Hanging out here, I promise I won't come back, especially after this, actually. Mr. Mayor and council, how ironic that the city is working on a vision statement for what I'm about to say. You all know I'm one of your biggest cheerleaders, and I've held many volunteer positions here in South Haven, currently chairing the Capitol campaign for the new senior center. And I want to top my hat off to Kate, she's serving in our advisory, so thank you, Kate. And I hope you all realize what a marketable asset the senior center is for South Haven. If you haven't seen it, I invite you there, I will show you around. It's amazing as we grow our city with people moving here. But what I am here to comment is about 77 Clinton. And I know some of you have been involved, Joe, I know you're involved in this, I know I've talked to the mayor about this. But this is a property and build out purchased by an LLC in our neighborhood on my block. Not only is it hideous, but it has no regard for its immediate neighbors, and most importantly, it's out of compliance for variances permitted by our own city staff. A zoning board of review was canceled at the last minute, citing the city is confident that they can work this out with the owner and builder. But here's the crux of the matter. Where do the residents fit in in that sentence? We're a city under 4,000 people, for heaven's sake. Well-regarded citizens who have given years of service to this city were rebuffed and treated disrespectfully. The resident who was impacted directly was dismissed, as were the other immediate neighbors. That sentence should read, we will work it out with the city, the owner, and the residents affected. So, Mr. Mayor, I know you've said this often, we can do better. This is one case where we can do better, and we should do better now. These residents deserve that. So I guess I'm going to leave it with this, how can we do this? Especially now, in the light of our new vision statement. So thank you.
Thank you. And again, I'll, I know I shared with you, I will.
I know.
We'll see what else can be done. So I know staff, I.
I got it.
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. I just want to quickly comment and echo just a little bit what Rosalie already stated. Every now and then, my wife and I will spend time, we'll ride around the city of South Haven, we love the city of South Haven. And we have two elderly individuals that live beside us, thinking in the future. With some of the stuff that we see that's going on, and I'm assuming getting variances approved, some of these houses that are going up encroaching, seem like, taking away privacy of the neighbors, some of these houses that are being allowed to go up, and I think it's on your watch. It's your job to protect the residents, especially those of us that are getting up in age. So I'm thinking in the future, if any of these guys pass on beside us, someone that has money can come in and just put them, house so big beside us, take away the backyard privacy. I mean, the things that we're seeing a lot. I mean, the things that we're seeing a lot in the city now is absolutely just disrespectful. No, no regards for the neighbors, and most of them appears to be short-term rentals that's going up. And to me, it just seemed like city staff, whoever's involved, is allowing this to happen. When our elderly are complaining their voices are not being heard because it's all about, and I hate to say this, the haves and the have-nots. I'm asking the council, the staff, Kate, whoever that has authority, zoning, whoever, to please do what you can to help save the character of our neighborhood. I mean, these houses are being stacked on top of each other. No privacy anymore. So I'm asking you all to at least put your heads together and try to stop this runaway train. And the reason why I'm saying, it's not happening directly in my neighborhood, but I can see if any of my neighbors leave here, someone buy the property, put up them and get some variance, lose everything. So I think it's a sin and a shame personally that it's happening on your watch.
Thanks, Joe.
Pat Gaston, 97 Superior Street. Swore to my husband I wouldn't talk tonight, but I'm back to the 77 Clinton Street situation. And I've been actually told not to talk about it, but in what Joe's talking about, I believe in zoning. I'm on the zoning board of appeals. I want the zoning to be respected, dealt with. This situation somehow just got way out of hand. And I, I don't have the solution. I had hoped when the first letter came out that we will work with everyone, but they didn't work with anybody. Didn't work with any. They worked with the owner. And I understand he got a signed building permit. But there must have been some way, some way to bring everyone together to come with a better solution than what we got. So I, I, you know, if you want to change the zoning, because Joe wants to make sure you can't build, if you can build what you can build, that's okay with me. That's, that's our zoning. You can cover 40% of your lot, you can cover 40% of your lot. But this was not that. This was not that.
Thanks, Pat. Appreciate it.
Pamela Chapel, 565 Monroe Boulevard. Back to the 77 Clinton Street. That house is right directly behind my house. And the, there was a ground-level deck, and now they're, they have proposed a second-level deck with sliding glass doors from the second floor, right across from our bedroom windows. If you were to go in our backyard, and Joe has seen it, it's beginning to look like a tenement in there. It's so close. It's like three feet from the property line. If this turns out to be a party house, which it appears to be, you know, scheduled to be that, we're going to have this in our backyard all the time. It's, it's really disconcerting to me. We won't be able to do our garden anymore. We don't have any sun coming through. It's really a concern, and I'm, I'm, I don't know where it stands, this second deck. I've understood that maybe that's not going to happen, but even as it, as it stands, it's an eyesore in our neighborhood. And we're not the only ones affected, so.
Thanks, Pam.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. So from my discussion with the zoning administrator, sorry, sorry, zoning ordinance, my understanding is the deck is going and that the city will be there to make sure the deck is not any bigger than the deck below it. I was very concerned hearing that. When I had asked to see the permit, I was told to file a FOIA request, which I thought was very offensive, especially when she added, "I know how to do it." What is most concerning is that the building permit was signed before the zoning was, zoning review was completed. That's what's in the notes on the website. And those zoning variances for the garage were granted because it was an accessory building. And now we have housing on top of that. That should have removed the variance from the very beginning. So in 2012, a 25-foot rear yard setback was cut to three feet. Three feet from 25 feet. The side yards were cut two feet from 15 feet. And if I read the zoning ordinance correctly, it's supposed to be a minimum of three feet. So it's below the minimum. The lot height was only supposed to be 16 feet to roofline. 16 feet. The lot coverage with the deck, with the garage, is only 40.2%. So it's only 0.2% greater. But with the deck, it's now 44.3%. This is ludicrous, and this happened because the zoning ordinances were not followed. I have raised this time and time again, that the zoning ordinances bend in the wind. They bend, they, the city asks how high to jump for developers, and the city holds the residents' feet to the fire and makes them move garage foundations a couple feet just to put, to correct, to do a new garage. It's ludicrous what residents have to go through to get anything done here. And you just open the doors for developers. It's not right. Mayor Smith, you said we were going to do things right. When? And Councilman Research, this is why I said, the mission statement. It's fine. You can make it whatever you want, but if you're not going to follow it, what good is it? It's not any good.
Thanks for your comments.
Larry Montz, 210 Clinton Street. I built a new house two years ago on Clinton Street. Originally, my plan was approved. Building permits were all approved. I had a hip roof on my garage that was at the height of 17 feet. The inspector came out and made us return all the lumber and change from a hip roof to a regular A-frame roof to lower the pitch of the roof at a cost of $3,000 to me after my permits were approved. I don't know what's going on with the building commission, but something needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Couldn't miss this opportunity to speak also. So Mary Lynn Boogie, 70 Gabriel Drive, regarding 77 Clinton Street. When this came up initially in 2012, I was not serving on the board at that time. However, in rereading what it said, actually, the reason for granting it was somewhat questionable because it was based on a physical quality of the wife of the person applying or other than the physical qualities of the property. And that's the physical properties that it depends on. It's the property, not a person living in the house because it runs with the property. It's nothing to do with the person in the house. In this particular case with this addition, yes, it might be, there might be some open interpretation regarding the three feet, whether it would apply, when it was granted, it was only granted for a one-story addition, not for an accessory building. And it could be argued that perhaps the variance wasn't specific enough and therefore could be interpreted to perhaps allow a second story on that building. However, the lot coverage is really of most, fairly clearly defined within the ordinance. How you measure it, and it includes any deck that's beyond four inches off of the ground because a four-inch one would be considered a terrace, and therefore they don't consider that lot coverage. Once it gets up above that, it is counted towards lot coverage, whether it's on the first story or the second story. And it now exceeds the 41% variance that it was granted, and it should not be allowed as particularly being on the second story overlooking at least three other houses there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Anybody else on public comments? Ryan.
Good man. Ryan Cervadis, 525 Superior Street, Unit 100. Only thing tonight I want to talk to you guys about is housing. It's a big issue. Realtors see it, citizens see it. A lot of communities, I've got packets I gave to Kate here about four or five weeks ago. I think you guys all got a copy of the ADUs, accessory dwelling units. I'd like if the city would take time to actually review that and move forward to try and get planning to put something in. One thing you will notice in the packet I gave, it shows six to eight, actually, Douglas talked about there's eight communities that actually have ADUs. The thing I like about it is it allows, if you're a senior, you can live in age in the same spot. If you're a seasonal worker, you can work in the summertime. I get a ton of calls this time of year for people looking for housing in the South Haven through September, October. This would not be a short-term rental at all. That's what these are not for. These are for the single professional, the teacher, the nurse, somebody moving in the area that's not ready to buy a home, or a senior citizen that would like to have somebody live next to them for security or, you know, some more income in their pension that they're being paid. But it's something that other communities are doing. I think South Haven could benefit greatly from these. So if you guys could do something to have somebody look into this, plus air planning and zoning, it'd be great. So. And if you guys have any questions, I have a ton of information on it. Just let me know, and I can provide Kate whatever, whatever you guys want. And that's it.
I'll get some more from you, too. I'm kind of curious, so.
Any questions on any of them?
Questions, come on. Everyone got that packet?
I haven't seen the packet.
Shouldn't Ricky has a packet? Hey, we'll get a few more. Get us a few more. Get us a few more. How's that?
I'll get you more by tomorrow. And then the nice thing is you'll see some different things. A lot of different communities, LA, up and down the shoreline are doing it throughout the country, so.
Take the information. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Was there anybody else on public comment?
David Beestra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard. I hope that as a result of conversations with quite a few of the residents, including on Facebook, and I know that you got looped in on the email, and I want to thank Joe Reeser for facilitating some work with the publisher of the Tribune. And I also hope we address the reminder, the problem is consistent ongoing littering. And I myself have observed these papers being thrown about two feet from the windows of the car. There's not even an attempt. And we just drove through again Sunday morning. One of the papers on the center line on Monroe Boulevard and, and throughout town, many, many papers that are thrown, three, four papers in a yard. It's obvious that no one is picking them up. So I hope this time, I know this has come up several times before, I hope this time we can really resolve to get something done. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you. Was there anybody else?
Jim Sankowski, 89, North Shore Drive, Bundy's Bakery. I'm here because I know the planning commission is looking at food trucks located all over the city. And between North Shore Memories, myself, and even the outpost, we don't want them there. For whatever the reason, you know, I know the outpost wants just too much parking or whatever that they would take up next to Stanley Johnson Park. But North Shore Memories and Bundy's, we need every single mouth on the north side that comes here in the summer. And you start letting food trucks over on the north side, you're going to take away from our ability to earn. And about less than 15% of my business comes from the south side of South Haven all year round. I mean, there's just, no one ventures, well, at least a lot, majority of the people do not venture to the north side to pick up baked goods or coffee. And I don't know what a food truck selling coffee and baked goods would want to make to be over on the north side. $1,000 a day? And, you know, I would think I would put a food truck somewhere for $1,000 a day. But because of the situation on the north side, $1,000 a day would come directly out of my business, directly out of maybe North Shore Memories business. And we just can't afford that. We're the last two sole proprietors as far as food on the north side, and we want to stay there. And any additional competition takes away from our ability to earn a living and stay open. So I'll keep going to the planning commission and trying to bend their ear. I know there's a few of them that think I don't need any more business on that board. Well, they're totally wrong. A business is a business, no matter the person. You know, whether they can afford to be in business or not, you got to make a profit. So thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. And thanks for running a great business. Anything else? Nothing. All right. City manager comments.
Well, thank you. As you all know, we had our first budget meeting tonight when we covered the CIP. Next Monday, we will be here at 5:00 PM to go over the funds in the proposed budget. So we'll be back here at 5:00 o'clock as well as our regular meeting at 7:00 PM. As many of you know, we have two meetings back-to-back in April because of spring break, and I hope all of you enjoyed your spring break. I know I did with lots of Benadryl. With that being said, I did want to bring everyone's attention to the All Seasons Marina sale that occurred while we're all on vacation. So All Seasons Marina is being sold to Gold Lake Marine. We're very excited about this development because it's very closely aligns with the 2019 community vision statement and the community visioning that would happen over three workshops with Ed Water, looking at how that marina can be used to, one, continue marina operations as well as having some accessibility. So we're very excited to have Gold Lake coming in to All Seasons, and we're very excited for them to be partners with the city as well as continuing on those marina, marina operations, which are so, so vital to having our, you know, our harbor operate. So just want to bring attention to that. If you had not heard it, bring that to your attention. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Thanks. All right. City council comments. I'll start at my left.
No comment.
No comment.
No comment.
Oh, I guess want to go home. I like it.
I also have no comment.
I, I just want to thank staff for all the hard work that went into, not only the preparation for this meeting, but the preparation for the budget meeting. I could tell there was a lot of good, hard work that went into that. So thank you.
I wish I could tell you I have no comment, but I do, to get out of here. I am thrilled, absolutely thrilled, that we're going to have a DEI assessment manager. It means a lot. But Letitia said it best. It is personal to her. It's personal to a lot of residents in this town. And my heart goes out for her, her husband, because they're dear friends. And to see her that upset, so I know this could help a lot of people in this community. I'm hoping the residents are patient. I think we're going to change the vision statement and make it representative of the town. The last comment, I probably shouldn't comment, but I'm going to, and that's 77 Clinton. I'm not going to get into who's right and wrong legally, and I'm not even sure if I even understand it. And I know Griffin drew a straight line with me. He said, "This is the way it is." But I got to tell you one thing. The city staff exist for one reason, because residents live here and pay their salaries. I always said when I had my business, "Don't call me the boss. Our customers are the boss." We only exist because of our customers. While the residents are the customers in this town, they are the ones that pay everyone's salaries. And for the life of me, I find it hard to accept that right around 77 Clinton are the nicest, kindest, long-term, year-round residents that want nothing but to live their last years in peace and have a nice home and a nice life. And they're going to have to put up with a home behind them that is literally almost hanging over their backyard against what I can best tell is an ordinance. And I can only tell you, when Letitia talks about personal, I take it personal, and I know the residents that live around there take
know the residents that live around there take it very personal. And I don't know how else to say it, but from a people perspective, it is absolutely wrong what's happening over there. And I hope you, Mr. Mayor, will try to enter scene, do whatever possibly can happen, or whatever possibly you can do. But it is a sad scenario, what's going on over there. And I walked it with all the residents, and I just, I couldn't believe what I saw. It's that bad. And that's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it. I'll circle back to that. Obviously, thanks for coming, everybody. Quick reminder, we have these new days, we have trash can pickups. If you have neighbors, you might need to let them know of the new days and times. I know I had a neighbor who I couldn't help notice as they wheeled it out on Monday, and I was like, hey, you're three days early, neighbor. And they're like, oh. So just, you might need to educate your neighbors, FYI, rather than just calling the city and getting them in trouble, you know. So FYI, welcome Gold Lake Marine. That's exciting. That's very exciting. For those that are, you know, that were concerned that you might see a bunch of condos go up on the riverfront, this is a functioning marina, boat sails, and, and, you know, exciting to see that happen. I think I heard a couple of different things, saying on 77 Clinton, yeah, that just came on my radar again while I was on vacation last week, so I will, will be meeting and talking, and I, you know, I, again, I'll ask staff to get something out to all of us, everyone can understand what variables we're talking about here. So I will just leave it at that. Was not here in town when it first popped up. And I, you know, I hear other kind of issues and concerns about what is, I mean, I know we're seeing you are getting homes built that are larger, and certain things are within our current zoning ordinance, and if there's, you know, we are seeing bigger homes getting created, and that's, that's, that's reality of a lot of our existing zoning ordinances. So that's something that could be looked at over time, but at this point in time, a lot of the existing structures you're seeing built are following code. So on that note, I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, we're adjourned. Good night, everybody.